Twenty-eight Chilton County Commission meeting to order. And if you guys will make note in the record that we have six attending. Greg is absent, and we do have a quorum. Has everyone had an opportunity to approve the agenda or review the agenda? And do we have any additions and deletions to the agenda?
We need to add, um, Justice Smithman's resignation. All kinds of...
Are there any other additions and deletions?
Chairman, one deletion. The banking, delete that, please.
Okay. Y'all make note of that on your, under item number six on commission reports. Delete or strike the banking.
We also have a bill from Tony's report. He won't be buying all the state business, whether he will be signed, specs, and issued bids.
Okay. You guys had time to make a note of that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda with the additions and deletions.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes of the January fourteenth meeting? And if so, could I get a resolution to approve those meetings? A motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes for the meeting dated January the fourteenth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the claims of January twenty-eight, two thousand twenty? And if so, could I get a motion to pay the bills?
I make a motion, we approve the claims, January twenty-eight, two thousand twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll come to the public comment section. And we have Van Forster and David Heflin up first. And Whitney, if you will, you could come up with him and kind of help walk us through this.
Thank you for allowing us to come tonight. What we're coming tonight, we discussed in our work session earlier, is you have in your packets that Sylvia sent you, there's a request for authorization to incorporate the ag authority that will be over the land, that's the industrial land that we had purchased earlier between the city and the county, the five hundred and twenty-seven acres. You've got a resolution for that, and then we're going to ask you, there's another resolution to appoint, so we're going to ask you to suspend your rules and ask you if you would appoint that tonight.
So, so we reviewed this in the work session, but in your packet, there is a resolution to establish an agricultural authority. That resolution has an attached map that defines the lines of the property and does not exceed the, the ownership that's out there between the city and the county. So what Van is asking is for one of us to offer a resolution to approve the creation of agricultural authority as stated in this resolution.
It also includes the incorporating documents.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, approving application seeking permission to incorporate an agricultural authority.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, and your second item would be that you're, you're going to ask for us to expedite the process of a, of a appointee from the county?
Exactly.
And, okay, we, we will have to vote to suspend our meeting rules to do that? And before I ask for a resolution to, to suspend the meeting rules, do y'all have a nominee for that position?
Yes, we do. Lynn Harrison.
Okay, Lynn Harrison. Okay, for those of you who do not know Lynn Harrison, Lynn Harrison is Mr. Jimmy Harrison's son. They're from the Fletcher, Maplesville area, and they're predominantly peach farmers from that area, even though they do grow other crops. So I would entertain a motion to suspend...
Mr. Chairman, before y'all do that, just note that in addition to that one person, there's two people being placed on by a legislative body as well.
Okay.
Yes, and you should have a letter showing that from your local legislature.
So I'll, I'll entertain a motion from one of you guys to suspend our meeting rules.
I'll make a motion, we suspend the meeting rules.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, and meeting rules are suspended. Floor is open for nominations, and we have a suggested nomination of Lynn Harrison. Are there any other nominations from the commission for our appointee to the agricultural authority?
We'll need to make that nomination, so I'll make the nomination of Lynn Harrison.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept Lynn Harrison as an, as the Chilton County Commission's appointee to the newly established agricultural authority. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Also, as stated earlier, there is a letter in your packet that comes from our delegation that is signed by all of our representatives, affirming their two appointments to this ag authority, and those appointments are David Heflin and Van Forster. So our ag authority, when the incorporation papers are filed, will be composed of those three individuals. Any other questions or concerns or comments? All right, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Ganim? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I have got a package prepared for all of y'all. And, um, per the Rules of the Road Department, we submitted bills that were for our camper, and you can read in there what happened. A tree limb, as we were bringing it home, damaged the whole roof. We had to have the roof repaired, and you can see in there what all was repaired. It was denied by the Association of County Commissioners of Alabama Self-Insurance Pools, and it's stated in here that the reason they denied it was that it had not been previously reported that the tree limbs were hanging down. I don't understand that, because how do you report something before it happens? And I kind of see what she's saying, but, um, the last picture, if y'all haven't moved them or shuffled them, the last picture in that, your packet, shows that there's still some limbs hanging down on that, and...
That actual limb's still there, it hasn't been removed.
And, you know, the thing about it is, yes, we had insurance. It paid, how much was it to have the roof?
Fifteen, it was right at fifteen thousand dollars.
And we were...
Luckily, we had insurance.
But we were out of pocket. Our deductible, plus the insurance was like, you know, this is unreal because of all the stuff that they have to do to that. So to get them to complete the whole package, we had to pay an additional three hundred and forty-five dollars, so that was a total eight hundred and forty-five dollars.
This limb's still hanging, the scoot bus has got to be hitting the limb. I mean, this, this right there is the bark scale, so there's other stuff hitting it.
Okay.
So, you know, I just ask, you know, we don't want every, all of it, we just want what we are out of pocket. Because if that hadn't happened, we wouldn't have been out.
Well, this is, this is new ground for us, or for me specifically as a chairman. We've never dealt with this, or I've never dealt with a situation like this. Typically, you know, we pay insurance for a reason, and the insurance covers the, the claims that, that they feel like we should be liable for. So I guess what I'm going to ask is that, that you guys contact our attorney?
Okay.
And he can provide his information, or you can get it through the, the, our county administrator or the website, and, and let's go down that road. First of all, it's not actionable for us tonight, because we have meeting rules that we can't act on anything that hasn't been discussed in a work session.
I understand, yes, sir.
And the second thing is, we don't really know where to go with this, because we don't want to set precedent where we're paying for every, you know, every allegation of something that's happening.
I understand, I understand.
So I'm, I'm going to ask you guys to go through the process and write him a letter, or contact him, or get your attorney to write him a letter, or however y'all want to go with that. And then he'll, he'll look at what our liabilities are and, and come back to us and advise us, and then we'll be able to take some action at a, at a further meeting.
So, I mean, as far as the road department, it's not, we can't get the limb out of the way? I mean, and...
If there's a limb in the way, and, and y'all, have, have you reported it?
Yes, sir.
It was reported September when the camper got to work, it's never, it's never been touched.
Okay.
There's potholes right under the limb, but they fix every month on County Road eighteen, it's never...
Is that tree on our right of way, Tony?
No, we do not have right of way on that road.
That tree, that's what I'm saying, that tree belongs to whoever owns the land, correct?
I would assume so.
I was wondering, because I seen how close it was to the road.
So you don't have a right of way on the road, what do you mean?
The only part of that road that is, or the land that is ours, is just ditch to ditch on that road. We don't have any kind of prescribed right of way on that road.
So this is actually in a yard that the hill falls off of, so where would the ditch lie?
Just the edge of the road, then, if there's not really a ditch, then it just goes edge of road to edge of road.
Is that on eighteen, where like, going to your daddy's house?
Yep.
Is that on the flat part around the...
It's right in front of Ron Holland's house.
Well, let's get, Tony, get your guys to go out there and see if y'all can identify the limb, and see if we can get it out without trespassing on the landowner that the tree belongs to. That's the first course of action.
As far as that goes, a limb could be cut off at the edge of the road.
Well, he'll, if, before he, if that tree is, does not belong to us, he'll have to get permission from the landowner to cut it.
Even though it, at the edge of the road, even though it's hanging over the road.
Yes, sir, because it's his tree.
I'm sure they won't care.
Well, there's several limbs on that, on our road that are hanging low.
Did the wind blow the limb down, or is this the first time y'all came in with a motor on?
It's a big tree. We were coming home from the beach, and, like I said, we went under it, and I thought, something ain't right. And sure enough...
As times went on, the limbs got heavier because it's groggy. We have been under it before.
I mean, when you go under it in a regular vehicle, but you take gas trucks, you take UPS, FedEx, scoobuses, I know they're all hitting it.
Right.
I think measured the day she said it was like nine foot six.
Wow.
Off the top of pavement.
Well, we'll, we'll get Tony to, to talk to the landowner and figure out if we got some kind of course of action to, to actually clear the road, and then y'all follow up with our attorney, and we'll figure out what we need to do from there.
All right, thank you.
Thank y'all so much for coming. I'm sorry something happened to your, your RV.
Well, these pictures pretty rough.
It was. But thank you, dear.
Thank, thank you. So guys, we'll move on to the department reports. And Tony, if you will, when you get through making your notes, we'll begin with you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first order of business, I would like to request a resolution to have the resignation of Jerome Johnson, operator accepted effective this Friday, January thirty-first, two thousand twenty.
I'll make that, that resolution, we accept his resignation for Jerome.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'd also like to request a resolution to allow me to advertise and hire a truck driver.
I'll make a resolution, advertise and hire a truck driver.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'd also like to request a resolution to reclassify Chris Blaisdell from operator to foreman, and that would also include his paid increase from an operator to a foreman.
I'll make a resolution to reclassify Chris Blaisdell from operator to foreman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to have a resolution to have our John Deere sixty-four thirty tractor, which is to us, CE forty-seven, declared surplus and sold in the March auction.
I'll make that resolution that we classify surplus of the CE forty-seven John Deere, sold in auction in March in Jamwood.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
What's the model of that tractor? What, what year model?
Two thousand eight.
The John Deere says twenty-ten.
Twenty-ten, I'm sorry.
It's a Massey's.
Yeah, I, I had them reversed, twenty-ten. Second is in conjunction with that, is to have a resolution to have the Massey Ferguson two thousand eight CE eighty-four declared surplus and sold in the March auction.
I'll make a resolution to have CE eighty-four, two thousand eight Massey Ferguson, declared surplus and sold in auction.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And then the last item I have, Mr. Chairman, is to request a resolution to bid out for the purchase of one side cutter. Money is in my current budget.
Okay, and you're going, you're going to spec that?
I'm going to spec it out and put it out.
I'll make a motion to give our engineer permission to spec out and take bids on the side cutter.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chairman. And just one quick thing in the way of update, I did get back our numbers from the auction company, and our trucks go to auction in March, and our guarantee's thirty thousand more than what we paid for them.
Each?
No, total.
Total, I'm just...
I know.
So we're talking close to break even when we replace everything and get them up, but you run them for a year for free, that's not bad.
That's awesome.
But that's just guaranteed, that's, they'll bring more than that.
That's awesome. That's, so far, that's been a very good deal for this county.
Those triachs will bring a lot more than those other...
We've, we've been criticized for having this new equipment, but when you run it for free, it's a pretty good deal.
That's right.
Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. First tonight, I'd like to ask for a resolution to accept the resignation of Justin Smithman from the sheriff's office.
I'll make a resolution to accept the resignation of Justin Smithman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to have him reclassified as a part-time deputy.
Make a resolution to classify Justin Smith as a part-time deputy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and I'd like to ask for a resolution to have Robbie Smithman reclassified as a full-time corrections officer.
I'll make a resolution to reclassify Robbie Smithman as a full-time corrections officer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Has he been part-time? Oh, okay, I was, I got you, I thought he was full-time already. Okay.
Any other discussion?
I got one question, Mr. Chairman, just for the sake of the minute. Does the date, January twenty-ninth, need to be in that resolution? Or is it matter at all?
Ms. Sylvie, if you will, make sure that the minutes reflect that he would be reclassified on January twenty-ninth, provided that we vote in favor of it. I'm a little ahead of myself.
On the, Justin Smithman?
No, on reclassifying Robbie Smithman, and we're about to vote on that, and I got ahead of myself, so just be prepared that, that it'll reflect as requested by the sheriff. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Just to reiterate for you, that he would reclassify Robbie Smithman to a full-time corrections officer effective January twenty-ninth. That was the motion. Okay? Judge Calhoun?
Good evening, men. Thank y'all for allowing me just a brief moment. The probate office is in the middle of two elections right now, along with the canvassing board, the sheriffs on that. As far as I know, everything's going forward, like it should be. So we've never ran two elections at one time, so we're, we're juggling, and things seem to be going well. Just want to remind you guys, we are going to be changing the voting location in Union Grove, but it will not be for the February election, it will be for the March primary.
Okay.
There may be some confusion out there, just wanted you, just wanted to remind y'all about that, okay?
I think I'm the only one that's affected.
Yeah.
Up here, yeah.
Also, we started, through the Secretary of State's office, we have a new bill that allows students to be a poll worker and do an internship. I wrote around all the schools yesterday and put out these applications, and so just wanted you guys to be aware that that intern program is going to take effect in the Mar- March primary, the presidential primary. All we're doing is trying to promote interest and give kids that are the age of sixteen and older an opportunity to come in and be a part of the election process and learn about it. And hopefully, this will encourage them to vote throughout their entire adult life. So we're looking forward to this. We've never had a, an avenue to allow this, we do now, so we're going to do that in our county. So just wanted you guys to be aware of that, in case somebody stops and asks you about students working at the polls, that's what this program is all about.
That's awesome. So, question for you.
Yes, sir.
I think it came off of your probate office Facebook post.
Okay.
But I, I think I remember reading, and I'm assuming this came from you, that less than sixty percent of the people in Chilton County are actually registered to vote?
That's correct. We have somewhere around forty-eight to forty-nine with the new census, we may be closer to fifty thousand, and we've got, well, we've got twenty, twenty-five thousand people that are registered to vote.
Is that, is that deceptive in that some of those are minors? Or is that a real number in the actually eligible voters?
Now, that, that's a real number. That, that's a, that's a total of active and inactive. Okay, so they, the inactives can still vote, they just have to, to activate their registration.
That's something we need to work on.
Yeah, we need to be proactive. The probate office and the canvassing board is, is trying to be proactive, to try to get as many people as we can registered to vote.
And when is the deadline on registration?
The registration for the March primary is going to be February the seventeenth, if you go online, if you try to walk into the Board of Registars, it's going to be February the fourteenth.
Those are important dates.
Those are very important dates.
Because if you don't vote, you can't complain. You lose, you forfeit your right.
Very good. That's all I have. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Judge. All right. I don't have this on my agenda, but if you guys will give me a little liberty, I want to speak a little bit here. We have the education tax vote that's coming up, and I don't have my white paper here with me, so I may tell you some things that aren't exactly right. But I read earlier this week where people were alleging that this would be a new tax, and it would bring us to an eighteen mill. I want to, I want to tell y'all that that is not true. If that's untrue, this commi-, if that's true, this commission is unaware of it, and we're the one that passed the resolution to put it on the, to, to allow the vote. So what we're doing is clearly, with no exception, renewing the same tax that has been in existence for what I'm told for forty years. We've had public meetings, we've gone on Facebook, we've gone on the radio, we've done interviews with the paper, and somehow the facts still are being distorted, and they're, they're purposefully telling untruths, because there's information out there that proves this otherwise. The, these laws that allow us to collect this tax were set out in different times by different pieces of legislation. I have a white paper, and what I mean by that is a list of facts where I can give you these specific pieces of legislation. We're, we are required by the state of Alabama to, to collect up to, or at a minimum of, let me not say up to, a minimum of ten mills of property tax to go toward education. If it, the law says the county commission shall collect, now, we have two options, or actually, we have three options. We can do it by a vote of the commission, non-voted tax, we can do it by a vote of the people, a voted tax, or we can not do it at all. My understanding is that if we don't do it at all, the, the county Board of Education forfeits their right to participate in the Education Trust Fund. And if you look online at the Board of Education's budget, last year, the Board of Education received in excess of forty-one million dollars from the Education Trust Fund. And by law, Chilton County cannot participate in that Education Trust Fund without our matching taxes. So that leaves us, that's not an option. That leaves us with two options, either a voted or a non-voted. And we have decided to retain the voted structure for a couple of reasons. It gives some more flexibility in the bonding aspect of the board in an emergency situation, i.e., tornado hits one of the schools, you don't say it happens in March, legislative session ends in February, you don't want to have to wait to the next legislative session to get a local bill passed so that they can bond or rebuild the school. So there is that ability through a voted tax to reserve a right for this commission to impose a temporary tax on people to allow an emergency situation. That's not new. That's been in existence for, ever since what, Amendment seven-seven-eight was, was put into existence. And I, I think I have it right, Roger, correct me if I'm wrong. So what we've opted to do is pay for a special education tax, that's going to cost us between, or election, I'm sorry, that's going to cost us between twenty and thirty thousand dollars. The commission, through that law, has the ability to retain four percent of that collected tax for the collection fees. And for us, that's a disputable number, because it's up and down, but it's somewhere between eighty and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. If we decide to vote by the commission's vote to assess a tax on the taxpayers of Chilton County without a vote of the people, the Chilton County Commission will lose that money out of our budget. Frankly, we've spent the last, well, the entire history of the county trying to claw out of a hole, and the last thing we need to do is give up funding that already exists. So we've opted for two reasons to go with a voted tax. Now, if that tax is voted down by the people, then this commission has two choices. Let the Board of Education and all the schools close, or go against the voters in the community and vote that tax in. But people have been told, and I wanted to make sure that I took this opportunity one more time to put this out in public, because I think it's imperative that we pass this tax, not only for the Board of Education, but for the county budget.
That we renew this tax, Mr. Chairman. We're not putting a new tax, we're renewing this tax, even though we're talking about passing this tax. That's what the misconfusion is. We are renewing the forty-year existing tax to benefit our children, our grandchildren, and those who, who hope to move here in the future and have children in the education system.
I would encourage anybody in the public, in the media, or anywhere else that has questions about this, to contact this commission. Because we can defend our position, we spent a great deal of time in public forums discussing this before we voted on it. Several, several meetings where we had work sessions that were dedicated to this. And these work sessions are put out on YouTube, they're live, if you don't, not a work session, but our meetings. And you can look back where we've had these discussions, they were, they were on these videos. This is not new, and it is being misconstrued by a few people in the public, and I don't know what their intention is, because it is not good to, we cannot close our schools. We will be sued by every parent in this county. So anybody have anything else to say about that, now that I've opened it up? It's a great time to discuss it, but I, I wanted to take this opportunity.
That summarizes it well.
And I, I'd like to say one thing right now. I got with our attorney and give to the paper the, some stuff that maybe I'll explain it better than what they had been explained to, so maybe they'll give that, you know?
I hope so.
I hope so, because we don't want fake news in Chilton County, even though we get it.
Well, there's two sides, and we need everybody to understand what our side is, because we...
I didn't know all the legal stuff about it myself, so I didn't try to do it all by myself.
Right. Well, our attorney has done quite a bit of research and he's put together a fact sheet for Joe and I'm sure it, you know, everybody has access to that, you should have it in, in, if anybody, I'm willing to sit down with anybody to talk about it. But we'll move on unless there's something else to be added to that. If I'm not looking anyone, where are we guys? We don't have anything from the commission tonight, wow. Okay, so we'll be on to the administrator reports, Ms. Sylvia.
Request resolution for permission to grant Terry Hinton a 3% pay increase effective February 1st, 2020.
Make a resolution to, for permission to grant Terry Hinton a 3% pay raise effective February 1st. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Request a resolution to grant Tiffany Edwards a 3% pay increase effective February 1st, 2020.
I propose a resolution to grant Tiffany Edwards a 3% pay increase effective February 1, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So, the recycling issue, we're going to table that until I, I can discuss this with one of my commissioner friends that serves on the Bev County Commission unless you guys choose to do it otherwise. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.